All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Tonight is November 7th, 2022. It's 5:30 PM. We'll start with roll call.
Kriener.
President.
McConnell.
President.
Fortune.
Garrett.
Buska.
Carmen.
President.
Next is the consent agenda. That includes approval of the agenda, approval of the claims, approval of minutes from October 17th, 2022, approval of minutes from October 17th, 2022, special meeting, and the approval of the minutes from November 1st, 2022 work session.
So moved.
Second.
Carmen.
Yes.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kriener.
Yes.
Fortune.
Yes.
Next is staff reports. We'll start with public works.
Okay, we received our sludge results back after we bulked our big storage tank with lime. They did come back good, so we are good to go to land apply. They'll hopefully be starting that within the next week or two. It'll be good to get that taken care of. I also had Brian Kbot from Kbot Consulting call me last week. He represents Verizon. And I don't know if you guys remember a few years, I think it was 2018, he was in and wanted to put up a monopole cell tower for Verizon. They kind of put it on the wayside until recently, but they want to go through with that. They plan on doing that in 2023. So I'll see what I have to do to get that taken care of.
Where's that location going to be?
It's over by the small tower on city-owned property there. I have the plans in my office if you want to take a look at them. And then there's only one yard waste pickup left, and that's next Monday for the year, and then that's it.
Next in staff reports is police. Tim?
All right, for October, really nothing too major of October for calls. Blake did graduate from the academy on October 21st, and got the top athlete award at all class. So, pretty nice. The charger's been outfitted and sunned the street. So Assistant Chief Winkie's driving that. And then the old Canine car, we would have to strip that all out and took that down to Berks. So they're going to put it on the October.
Question, Tim. How long can a vehicle sit on the streets unattended and unmoved?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours?
Yep.
So if a vehicle sits on the street for a couple of months and don't move, it should draw a little attention?
Should.
Okay.
You got one in mind?
I've had some complaints.
Okay.
About some vehicles I'll get with you.
Yep, sounds great.
Thank you. Next, staff report administration.
Just busy getting ready for the budget, working on the projects, the health insurance renewal. That's about it.
Okay. Any committee updates this month yet? It's early.
They're all this week.
They're all this week?
This week.
All right. Next is comments from the audience, and this portion of the agenda is for comments that are not related to one of the items on the agenda. So if anybody has any comments to items not related to the agenda, you're welcome to come up front. If not... Okay. First, first on the business agenda is WHKS to present the proposed downtown crosswalk reconstruction project.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like the lights dimmed?
Probably. See how this looks here along the way. Everyone see that okay?
So this is, I printed it for you guys.
All right, thank you. My name is Darren Sicknick, and with me tonight is Scott Hunnicky. We're from the, from WHKS, the city's engineering consulting firm. And so tonight we're having the public hearing on the downtown sidewalk and crosswalk reconstruction, which is slated for next year. And so we'll just go to the next slide. What we're, just kind of have a little bit of outline. I'll handle some of the sections, and Scott's going to address some of the other ones as well. And we'll go through the project, what it entails, what the schedule is, how the assessment process works, and then what the council's actions would be. And then after that, we'll open it up to the questions, and then the public comment period will follow that. So, next slide, Scott. The project is the downtown area of Elm Street. This is the old part of town that the old building, building fronts and faces there from First Street, or excuse me, First Avenue on the south and Third Avenue on the north, and essentially right in front of the courthouse there. This area that we've looked at for a while, Scott actually toured it with one of the council members to kind of go in and just physically look at some of the properties, make sure there weren't any surprises in any of the basements. And then the, so this is kind of the, what we, how we developed some of the preliminary assessments from that. So, okay? So here's what the proposed construction's going to be. So all of the colored crosswalks that are in the downtown are going to be removed. They're going to be replaced with concrete, just regular gray concrete, so they're not going to be red anymore. There's also, and then they'll be repainted, but a couple of the, the crosswalks are going to be removed just because of their location and how they affect business doorways and such. But, so I think there's two of them that are being removed, and then the rest are being replaced with just gray concrete. At each corner, there's going to be new ramps, so these are going to be ADA compliant handicap ramps. The sidewalks also going to be replaced as part of this. The, they're going to be kind of a, a two-step process. There's going to be a flatter spot closer to the building that's more ADA compliant, and then there'll be a portion closer to the curb that'll probably not be ADA compliant. And that way, we can work with the, the grades that are out there. The buildings are not the same height, so we're, we're working with the buildings and the curb and gutter that's there. The curb and gutter, the curb itself's going to be removed, so we have a little bit of room to, to work to get the sidewalk formed up. And then also in the sidewalk itself, there's water shut-offs or what's called curb stops. So back in 1983, the city had done a lot of the water mains at that time, but some of the services have been damaged. So city staff's recommending that those water shut-offs be replaced as part of this sidewalk project. And then the storm sewer, if like, at a, if there's an intake right near the corner that's in conflict or as something with the pedestrian ramp, we're either going to relocate those or somehow modify those to help with the, with the ramps themselves. Okay? So, this is just kind of a look ahead at the schedule, what it would be. So tonight, we're having this meeting. The council will then act on the resolution of necessity if they so chose. Coming up in February, so we're going to then go back to our office, work on plans, come back in February, present those plans to the public, and then if we get lots of comments or we need to make changes, we can make them at that point. So then we're going to, then go out and get bids. So we'll, the council have to act on it in March, and then we'll get bids in April. And then again, there'll be another public hearing on the plans at that April 17th meeting. And then if everything works out, then we'll have start construction in June. We expect that the project will be phased, so I'm sure some of you are interested in how that will affect your business. So we would intend that this project would be phased, and we would not blow up all of downtown all at one time, so it'd be more on a block-by-block or section-by-section basis. And then, once everything's done and fall, then the final assessment numbers would be set. So that's basically, at that point, the final dollars, where they're at, as far as the construction dollars come in, that's where the final numbers would be set. The number that you received, that is the, the, according to Iowa law, that is the most the city can assess you. So that would not, you could not have a higher number than that amount that they currently had sent, sent you. It could go down, but it can't go up. Okay? All right, Scott's going to talk a little bit about the process.
Yes. The next couple slides, just go over the assessment process from Iowa Code 384. This is very regimented, cut and dry. Here's the steps that we need to do for, for this to be an assessment project. So first, the council determines the need for the project, and then we, we put together an engineering study that included a cost opinion on there. From there, the council authorizes us to prepare the preliminary assessment plan and schedule, where you take the property, you take the cost, and you figure out how much each, each parcel's going to, going to be assessed. From there, we file that preliminary plan and schedule with the council, and then public notice is given through the paper and mail to the affected properties. From there, the council holds a hearing of resolution of necessity to gather public input, so that's where we're at today. And then where we go from there, the council can consider input and decide whether we want to proceed. So tonight, we're going to figure out, you know, we've gone this far, are we going to go any further? So the council may authorize us to prepare preliminary plans and specifications, and orders the clerk to publish, to publish the notice of hearing letting, so we'll take a deeper dive and actually look and start designing how each one of the, how each one of the crosswalks and each one of the locks affect your buildings. From there, the project will be publicly bid, and then we would hold a public hearing on plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost. And now, that time would be in the spring and April. From there, the construction contract will be forwarded in the spring, project would be constructed over the summer, and then final assessments amounts, like Darren had said, would be, would be finalized once the construction process is over. So the assessment policy that this project will be having is 50% of the total proposed project cost, excluding water main, intersections, sanitary, and storm sewer, are assessed to the abutting properties. Sidewalks will be assessed 90% of the total cost, excluding the crosswalks. The crosswalks are not an assessment cost. We use the modified Flint method to calculate the assessments, and corner lots would be assessed 100% for the long side, and only 50% if you're on the short side of an intersection of, of a street. Alleyways are not streets, so they would be just the, the front cost there. So our estimated cost for the entire project was $797,000. The estimated assessable cost is $252,000, which means that the property owner portion of the project is approximately 30, 32% of the total project. And the city would be picking, picking up the balance, $546,000. Again, the city share is 50% of those assessable street costs, plus 10% of the sidewalk cost, and all of the city utilities, water, storm sewer, intersections, and any deficiency that properties would not be able to pay. And the city shares practically 68% of the total cost. So the assessment payments, the final assessments will be payable in the spring of 2024 after we figure out the full, the full assessments at the end of '23. You have an option for, to pay the full assessment within 30 days. If you like not to do that, unpaid assessments will be added to your property tax and paid for 10 years with interest. And unpaid assessments will be included on the property taxes, starting in the fall of 2024. Then let Darren come back up.
Finish the, finish it up here.
So, as we mentioned before, what you kind of have, or the council needs to decide, they need to listen to your comments, decide if they want to proceed. And so if they were to proceed, there, tonight is, there's a, a resolution. And so they need to either adopt that resolution of necessity without any changes, so it would be as-is, a resolution with amendments, so if they decided to modify anything or change something, they could do that, or they could just defer this to a later date. So they could say, we, we need time to think about it, and then come back and decide at a, at a different time. So those are what they're looking to, to do tonight. That's why there's a, this is the process, to have a public hearing. So after we're done, the council, the mayor will open up the public hearing, then they'll have you come to the, to the podium, state your name, your address, and then just, you know, add your comments about the project so the council can hear that. All right? This is the council, is there any questions for me? All right. Back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So no questions by the, from the council? No, okay. Next then, we will open up the public hearing on the proposed resolution of necessity for the downtown crosswalk reconstruction project. Will I read these? No. Okay. So we did, I'm going to read first a couple of letters we received in the mail. The first one is from Jim and Connie Zahaski, and it says, "Sorry, we are not able to attend tonight's meetings. We would like to offer the following objection to the sidewalk project on North Elm. We ask that the city to contribute at least 50% towards the assessment for the project. Who knew the cost of having a business in Cresco would be so costly? We've just finished paying off our last assessment on the new street at our address of our previous studio by Quickstar, and that was a whopping $26,000. Please consider contributing more to this project, maybe use some of the retail sales tax we have collected for the city over the years. Thank you for your consideration." Jim and Connie Zahaski. And the next one is dated October 31st, 2022, and this is from Dr. Jeff Leeper. It says, "Dear Mayor and City Council, this letter is to dispute the proposed sidewalk work on 213 North Elm. Legal description, M25 South Half, West 40 Lot 14, and North 25 South Half Lots 15 and 16, Block 11, Cresco Plaid. The reason for the dispute is that the old sidewalk was removed and replaced in May of 2019 by Andera Construction of Cresco. This was done after consulting with both the mayor and city manager at that time, Mark Bolley and Rod Friedhoff. The colored brick strip at the curb was crumbling, uneven, difficult to clear snow and ice in the winter, and it had become a tripping hazard. I knew then that the city would be addressing the downtown sidewalks in the near future, but I decided my section of the sidewalk needed to be replaced immediately. I contacted the mayor and city manager, and they both gave me the okay to go ahead and replace the sidewalk in front of the building. I asked if I needed to put a new brick, in a new brick strip or a colored section of cement, and they said that was not necessary. For the city of Cresco to propose to rip up three-year-old cement and replace it with new cement at a cost of $4,678.24 is completely unwarranted and unnecessary. It should be no problem for the construction crew to tie in any new cement sidewalk to that on my property. Enclosed is a copy of the invoice for the job. I invite any city council member to come by the building and observe the sidewalk for themselves if necessary. In addition, this letter of protest, I intend to attend the council meeting at 5:30 PM on November 7th, 2022, to disagree that any new cement work on the sidewalk in, from of this building needs to be redone after three years. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Jeff Leeper." So I guess if anybody else has any comments or wants to say anything, you're welcome to come up to the podium and state your name and address, and, and say what you'd like to say. That's what this time is for, so.
I'm Barbara Prashaska, and I'm here in reference to 121 North Elm. Our half of a block, just about, there's one, one building that wasn't, was replaced in 2014. And it seems like, I sort of agree with Dr. Leeper, that, you know, the cement that's there is good. We did try to, at that time, I think the city was considering doing something with the sidewalks. We checked on it, and they did not give, you know, they evidently didn't go ahead with it at the time, but because of the need that it needed to be done. And we did put a strip of colored cement, but not the, the block in it. And that was done in, in the fall of 2014. I think it's a little ridiculous to rip up good cement. Now, I can understand the crosswalk, the walk, the sewer, and if, I don't quite understand what you mean by a certain amount to the curb to be on the ADA. That you leave part of it the way it is, but then you would...
Nope, it'd all, all be replaced. All the sidewalk would be replaced, including the ramps and the little bit of curb and gutter.
So you would rip up my whole front?
Everything would be replaced.
Why?
To be ADA compliant and to fix, to make it uniform for businesses along the frontage.
It's pretty uniform along that street right now. I do believe there's one building that has a step up to go into the building, but that's at the base of the building. And if I understood correctly, that would be up to the, to the owners to do something. You wouldn't be...
We wouldn't go in pro, across, or into any like alcove or little bump out. That would be, yes, correct, the responsibility of the property owner, if there was anything they wanted to do.
But they wouldn't have to do it?
They wouldn't have to do it, no.
I just think it's kind of dumb to rip up good sidewalk that's already there, that something should be able to. I could understand if part of it had, the way you stated it, I took it that part of it would stay the same, or could, would all be the same, and then part of it would be made ADA. Does that mean there'll be absolutely no curb, it's just going to go down to the street?
So, so what, what the ADA requirements are, and this is a federal requirement, is to make a, a path somewhere in the sidewalk that is compliant, which is not a steep crosswalk, so fairly flat. And then, but with old downtowns, the buildings are at different heights. So the path that we're looking at would be flat near the building, and then once you got further away from the building, then it would be a little steeper, and that would be able to go up and down with the curb and gutter, because the curb and gutter has to drain for water purposes. So the part next to the building would be more level, platter, then the part closer to the sidewalk would vary with the curb and gutter.
Is there any possibility that part of the sidewalk that is there could be left if it is all level through there and just the ADA?
And we kind of talked about that too, and like you said earlier, to get all of the buildings and to get it all...
It would, it would be quite difficult, and we haven't designed it yet, but it would be difficult to, the difficulty is if one business has a chunk that is compliant for a portion, and then somebody that's definitely not, it's hard to match, get them all to, to work together. It's, these are not very large lots, they're all narrow buildings, all right next to each other. There is no boulevard to, to work with. So it's, our recommendation is that you do all of it together so that you can design it all together to be compliant.
Did that kind of answer your question, Barb?
No.
Okay.
Phil Henry. I have 112, or 212 North Elm, and then I have 117 North Elm. I have both sidewalks replaced within the last, one's been the last three years, the other one is back with bargeless, because I just bought that building about a year ago. And I understand the crosswalks, understand the ADA compliance, but the problem I have is if you're going to make it like level so many feet out, is that going to leave a more gradual slope to the street? That seems like more of a hazard than leaving it the way a lot of the buildings are right now, because a lot of the buildings, there's not a lot of slope for most buildings that are in Cresco. There's maybe one or two that have a higher entrance to their building, but the sidewalk itself is pretty flat and level. You know, it basically gradually flows out. It just seems like if you're going to try to make them all straight going all the way across, you know, so many feet wide out, so does that mean the, this is going to go like this as our sidewalks are flat all the way through? Or is it going to be flat, and then you're going to have to adjust each side?
It depends. So as you stated, there are some areas that are fairly flat. As you, as the curb goes, it's, the curb is draining towards the intakes. So that's the part that's harder to, to match into. So if, if we can have a uniform slope all the way across, then that's what we would propose. But then you also have, as you stated, some, some buildings, their entry is at one elevation, and then 20 feet down is another door, and that's at a different elevation. So there may be some going up and down to try and match doorways or steps. So those are the, the difficulties that it is in designing a downtown. It's not going to be easy, but it is, to make them compliant as the law is stating, that's, that's the difficulty you're trying to be...
So what would make it not compliant? Would you, like if everybody did it individually?
If you did them individually, the, they're, the biggest thing that is hard, difficult to navigate is, is the crosswalk of a, of a sidewalk or something. If that gets too steep, someone that's in a wheelchair has difficulty maneuvering. And to us able-bodied people, that's, that's not an issue, but to someone in a wheelchair, that becomes more of a, of a problem, is that crosswalk. So that's, they recognize that you can't fix everything, but if you can make it the best you can for a path, and that, that path has to be at least, they say, five feet wide, you can do four feet, but then you got to have passing zones, which, and this is not, I won't get into the designing part of it.
Is that considered basically 100% level?
No. It, it has to be what's, the, the requirement is, is what's called 2%, or that's a quarter inch per foot, is what, what that, in layman's terms, it would be. So that has to be across five feet of walk, and then the remainder can vary. And that's that part we're talking about, next to the curb, that would vary up and down to try and adjust for the curb and gutter, because that, you have to also make the water green. And then at the ramps, at the intersections, you have to also have landing spots where someone in a wheelchair can come and physically turn their wheelchair and turn 90 degrees and go ramp this way or ramp this way. So those are the, and then those can only be so much of a grade as well.
Have you guys done a grade of a lot of the stores here, of what they are?
Yeah, we, we've done some kind of in the middle block. The city looked at this a couple of years ago, and we kind of looked at some of those. And it was kind of a trick to make those work, and then council at that time did not proceed with the project, and then since then now, it's like, well, let's do the whole downtown as one uniform project.
And that's where, you know, that's where I come back is, you know, trying to take care of my problems. Before, I had issues because the cement was cracking, the brick was, all broke up. So I take care of the project myself, and at that time, the city had no guidelines, no anything saying that there was anything in the works of something changing with the handicap part of it. And so I go ahead and do that, and now I'm going to get charged twice for the same stuff. You know, the one building I bought was already done, but now I'm going to have that done, but now I'm going to have that cost on that, where I worked now at 212, it's like another $4,600. I had a guy quote it today for $3,300. So you know, it's, I know it's an adjustment, they're an estimated cost, but it's like, you know, you try to do the right thing, and you just get hammered a little bit. I mean, it's, nobody's fault. It's just, the project's been going on since we had rag fry. They wanted to do it before rag fry years ago. That's what, 15 years ago, probably, they talked about doing it. So then when you go ahead and do it, and then there's no guidelines at that time, now I have to turn around and spend $10,000 for the two buildings, for new sidewalks, that are less than, one's less than 10 years old, mine's less than three years old. So that's why I have an issue, because it's like, I spent the money to fix it up, to have less issues with problems, someone tripping, someone falling. But now I'm like, where do I go from here? Because it's like, that's a lot of extra money to pay out for something that's already new. So that's why I have an issue. I don't have an issue with the crosswalks and all that stuff. It's just that I fixed what I had, I did the right thing, but now I'm getting punished for doing the right thing. So that's why I have an issue.
Thanks, Phil. We did talk about this in 2019. I don't know if you two gentlemen were here, but that's when COVID hit in 2020, and that's why we tabled it.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Did it after that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And looking through the permits, looks like the last sidewalk permit the city issued was 2014. And I know a couple of you have did that since then, must have done it without a permit, but there's been a few since 2008, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, it looks like that got permits since 2008. Any, anybody else want to come up and talk?
Excuse me, Roy Gordon, Ruth Holtz. You know, I feel for these people. I understand where they're coming from. But yet I said, you know, there's comments made, this has been tabled for how many times? I think it's time to stop tabling the issue. I feel it needs to be done. I probably have the most frontage. Myself and Bill Myers have a double wide store. I understand where they're coming from. It's no fun. But if you look at the crosswalks, and you really look at our sidewalks, and you look at the showcase of the city, and what I see is not, is not a very good representation of Cresco, Iowa. That's my opinion. And if you walk the sidewalks, there's a lot of toe stubbers, catchers. I just feel it's time, no more tabling, get the issue forced, and move forward. There again, I feel for Barb, I feel for Phil, I understand that. It's just kind of like we did a driveway in the back. Two years later, the city put a sewer in, which was wonderful, but we had just cemented it all, and I watched all that cement that I just paid for get ripped up. The city, the city paid for it the second time, but sometimes things like this happen. I just feel like, as I said, when somebody drives down Main Street to Cresco, Iowa, that's still, that's home, that's the showcase.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I'm Alex Bowles. I just purchased 225 North Elm. Before I bought it, had it inspected, looked at, the sidewalk out front is perfectly fine. So I did inspection here this last week. I went up and down Main Street, and the crosswalks, and like that red-colored brick, you know, you could kind of see, you know, where that stuff needs to be replaced. Is there a way that a guy would be able to do from that red brick to the curbs, instead of ripping up everybody's sidewalks? Because most of them are actually pretty decent shape. There are some that have some cracks in them, which, you know, you could tear them out if needs to be done. But I don't know if that's in, you know, some of you guys are going to talk about, just doing what needs to be done and not every single thing, because like I said, I just bought that building, you know, it's an extra $4,600 on top of that.
Which building is that, by the way?
The connection building, it'd be 25 North Elm.
Connect, okay. And that brick, the red brick, is how old? Do we know? When the streets were done, so in the, is that the 80s?
83 or...
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, otherwise, like the crosswalks and, you know, some of the curbs and stuff do need to be fixed, but I don't know if every single thing needs to be fixed.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Jeff Lieber, and I already read in the letter, so thanks for hearing that. First time I ever spoke at a council meeting, this is different. Don't have much to add to what I said in the letter, other than, you know, I wasn't aware of any, any inch flatness of cement, but I, I think that, just from my property and the ones next to it, they are pretty level, and they're going to be pretty close to the way it is, I believe. And I chose to do it because, like I said, I have a lot of wheelchair people coming into my business. And the hardest part's actually getting up into the little entryway, which has a lot more of a slope than the sidewalk for sure, but people do it all the time. And, you know, so I just feel like tearing up, like I said, new cement that I think is in good shape, and that stretch anyways, and pretty, pretty, seems to match and fill in pretty well. So I'm not so sure that that is a good use of funds in that case. So just a little comment about, we do get a lot of traffic with wheelchair people right now, and so far it's never been an issue with that, other than the bad cement near the curb, which is why I went ahead and replaced everything. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Just got a couple of questions. Water shut offs, are they extra cost over the assessment? I mean, if you're running into a problem with curb stops, will they be assessed to all the owners?
No.
Yeah.
That's included, is that?
That's included. Water infrastructure is always paid, in Cresco is paid by the city.
Okay. Is one of the reasons that you're tearing all this up, you're going to change the water mains? Or do anything with that, or sewer, or anything like that?
No.
No.
I believe that's all in the street there, isn't it?
Yeah, the water main was replaced in 1983, and it's ductile iron, so.
Okay. How much of the curb height's going to change? I mean, is that why, basically, you're tearing out curbs too? Is it because you have to change them because of ADA?
The, some of the curb heights will, they'll vary some, so it's, it's a way to, for us to work with the grades, and then also to try and get drainage, because some of the, some of the curbs aren't draining. So we're trying to work with drainage and then heights of curbs to make them work.
If they change the curbs a lot, is the street going to be redone then too?
No. No, we're going to, hopefully it's just the height of the curb, and we're not talking a lot, just like an inch or two, if we can make it work, so.
Then my question is, why tear out all the curbs? I mean, if you've just got a couple of spots, because I don't think the curbs are really all that bad, are they?
There, there's some that are bad in a spot, and then it's enough to make it so it can drain to the intakes. And then we're also removing the crosswalks that, that are affected as well. So, and those are in, I don't know, already have eight or 10 crosswalk locations, I can't remember the number, but, so it's, it's a way to, to work with the grades and then, and promote drainage as well.
And then, it was just federal money? Was there any, anything like that, or nothing?
Fortunately.
Washington just went through, they did their whole downtown sidewalks and stuff, and you guys want to see once what they mean by, by the sidewalk coming out and then sliding to the curb. They, everything they did was like that. They're going to be ADA compliant and stuff. Looks nice, but it's not on the money.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else have anything they want to say? So Darren, the people that have recently replaced their sidewalks, have you seen where other cities, what, what's happened there? I mean, what, what are some options have you seen?
So some of the communities around, if they've done, residents have done private work in the right of way, so it doesn't have to be just sidewalk. It could be things that were improving their street or whatever. They usually kind of say, well, we will recognize that, the council will recognize that, and say, well, we could give them a break of some percentage off of their assessment. But they also say, well, we can't go back forever. And usually the timeframe that they set is within, if you've done something in, within the last five years, and you're, in the right of way, that has improved the city's public right of way, then there is a possibility of a break that they would grant on their assessment. I haven't seen anybody go greater than five years, though.
Right. Okay. All right. Any, any questions from the council?
I have one.
Okay.
For the unpaid assessments, and the presentation that says will be added to your property tax and paid over 10 years with interest, do we have to charge interest?
Yes, but we set, we set the interest rate.
So it can be low?
What we've done on all the other assessment projects is gone 1% over our bond. So whatever we borrow the money for, we add 1%, and that's the rate we've been used.
All right. If that's, if there's no more comments, we'll close the public hearing. Number three on the agenda, a resolution with respect to the adoption of the resolution of necessity proposed for the downtown crosswalk reconstruction.
Can we have it changed or looked into to do something different for these people that have just replaced their concrete? Like Darren was talking about?
Do you have something in mind? I, I mean...
Like the people that have...
Yep.
...already done it within the last five years? Can we give them a break on their property tax or assessment or whatever?
Can certainly discuss it if you want, yeah.
What I was wondering was, if we did like what Jan said and what Darren said that we've done in the past, can we look at what...
We've never done it in the past.
Or, I'm, I'm sorry, other communities, other communities have done in the past. Could we be sure that they're ADA compliant, so we don't get in trouble with the powers that be...
Yeah, so when, when we're talking about, or what I'm mentioning, that the other communities will give them a break, this, this, the city will still do the project, so they'll still possibly rip out what that, they did. It's just, they would say, well, if your assessment was $10,000, we'll cut you a break and make it $5,000.
So if it was done in the past five years or even 10 years, should it have been done with ADA compliance in mind?
So the answer is, it shouldn't be, but it, it would be difficult, especially in a downtown, because you're trying to match other properties that are right next door that, it may be compliant for a small section, but then it, it maybe wouldn't be as it went and tied into the neighbor's property. So what was discussed for this property is try and make as much of that sidewalk as compliant as you can. And that kind of means you need to go from property to property along that route. So hopefully, if, if we were to do that, that's what we recommend, is try and get it all together, block by block, you know, just make it as compliant as you possibly can.
Okay.
Is it possible, if I can ask something? Like, you're saying it's ADA compliant, now is it going to be completely ADA compliant? Or is it going to be, you know, some stuff's going to be, some stuff's not going to be? Or if your property is ADA compliant right now, does it have to be something that has to be tore up and gone through? Because I know you were saying something about, well, some, even after you do it, some things might be compliant, and some spots might not be compliant even afterwards.
Correct. So that, that's the difficulty with, with the downtown. So if I can answer, try and answer the question, we'll make it as, as compliant as we can, try and be 100%. But I don't think that's realistic in a, in an area that you have all these different grades that are all over the place. And then you could try and save pieces, it's just up to the council, is like, well, are you, would you, do you want to have a whole block done with like 10 feet that's old concrete? What I mean, old, like even five years old? It's going to look different in front of one business versus, you know, another business. It's, it's your decision, if you want to make it continuous. If there are sections that are compliant, if you direct us to, we can save those, but it's not going to look uniform, if that's your direction.
Sure.
What does that add to the overall construction cost, when you start piecemealing?
It'll make it more difficult, so.
I mean, is there a percentage that we could grab, a number, 5, 10%, 3%? I, I know it's an impossible question, but in construction, if they got to start working around and keeping everything to grading and jumping around a storefront, and trying to tie into the other side, rather than a continuous pore?
It, it, it could add cost. You're, you're saving the cost of the material, but you're adding more labor potentially to the extra work to go work around it. So it, it, it may not be a big cost savings to, to save sections ultimately, but again, if, if, if you felt that was what, what the public wanted, then that's, we'd work that way too, so.
But just for conversation's sake, if you decide to save some of those spots and to save a store owner some money, but we're going to have more money in construction costs, and that cost is going to be passed on to the other store owners?
Potentially, yes, yes.
Potentially, yeah.
Also, you're going to have trouble matching up if you have one place that has cement, and then you're trying to match up where you're at, you know, tracking it out to get rid of it, and then you're matching up to it?
Yeah, so it...
You're creating a trip hazard.
It, it makes construction more difficult if there's pieces that you're trying to salvage.
Are they going to check and change all curb stops down? They're going to check them and stuff?
You mean like the water shut offs, you mean?
Yes. So, yeah, we're going to check them all, and then if, if they needed replacing, they'd be replaced.
But you're putting in all new curb boxes, right?
Right, the boxes, yes. The box, the stand pipe itself is all getting replaced. The valve at the bottom is being checked, and if it needs replacing, that, it will be replaced. But the box, the stand pipe would be replaced.
We have almost a half, a whole half a block up to the alley, to the corner, that was all done at one time. Would that be looked at? Because it is all the same.
And I don't know...
It's all I'm just asking that question.
Yep, yep. And I don't know where the compliance is there either for the ADAHA.
I mean, I understand that, that you'd have to be part of it.
Yeah, yeah. Any other question?
One question. So we have, what do we have, seven crosswalks at this point?
Eight.
I think it's...
Eight.
So you would cut it down to three crosswalks, or four crosswalks?
Which ones are you eliminating? You said you were eliminating two crosswalks.
There, there's a crossing L now, so we're closing one.
So they're eliminating, the ones on the alleys, what? The ones on the alleys are going to be, the ones on the alleys will be eliminated. And then there's one like from Hometown Accounting, is it to Burks? from Hometown Accounting, is it to Burks? That would be eliminated. But then, a new one would be put in off of Second Avenue. So on Second Avenue, you're going to have crosswalks on both sides of the street, going straight into the county courthouse. But we're eliminating the two coming off of South Park Place and North Park Place. Those would be eliminated. A lot of that problem was, the storefronts were too close, we can't get the ADA ramps on the side of the streets. So, that's why we had to eliminate a couple of those. And then we're eliminating the one down by, let's, off the alley, of both the north and the south side. So, by the bakery there would be eliminated, and the one down, the north side.
So I have two now, one, you know, I'm going to call it the theater, and then the other one that would go into the courthouse, so to speak. Do I still have two of those?
So you're only going to have the one coming off of Second, off the theater street?
So legally, you have to have X amount in the block space we have, three blocks? Or is there no?
Not really a set requirement, it's just at, at intersections. Unfortunately, you got, where the courthouse is, that makes offset intersections, so it's more difficult to say which one gets the crosswalk. So, we're trying to keep them at each intersection, at least one.
And Darren, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Roy, you might still have two. Because doesn't he still have the one that comes across the street?
Yeah.
To the west, to the east, I mean. So, he'll still have that corner piece, where two crosswalks will meet?
Right, so where we connect like our store, then to like Tom, who means-
Yeah, because currently, the other one's just down the street from you, it'll now be on the corner.
Right, yeah.
So they'll both meet right there at that corner. Right.
So when the street was redone years ago, actually, would you say 80s?
83.
Was it ADA compliant then?
I don't know if there was an issue back then.
With the crosswalks, how they're all sloped and-
I don't know.
That wasn't, that wasn't in existence.
This is something that came about in the 90s, I believe.
Yeah.
So my question, we did have seven though, now, and currently, we go down to six?
And you're only talking the east-west ones? We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We have eight currently. And we'll go down to four. The ramps are really expensive. Huh?
To me, I feel that's pointy.
Yeah. I mean, most towns have one per block.
Yeah.
You know? But yeah, the, the ADA ramps take a lot of space. So some places, it was impossible, and, and, yeah. So I guess, Jan, you brought up earlier a question, was that answered?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So then our, our next step, then, if, if the council wants to go ahead with it or not?
So there's the three choices, like-
Yep.
They said, we can either approve it, as it was written, approve it with an amendment, or postpone it till the next, or we state the next meeting date, if you are thinking about changing the scope of it.
I would like to add some amendments to it, so I'd like to postpone it until our next meeting.
So we can keep moving on it, I guess, do we want to decide on what your amendment is? Because if we don't talk about it till-
Well, I'd like to, I'd like them to look into the, I would like to be able to reduce the assessment to the people that have already put concrete in within the last five years. And-
I believe that's two property owners, as far as I'm aware. Is that correct?
I think it's three. Isn't it Phil and Barb and Dr. Lieber?
Barb's was in 2014, so that's eight years old.
Be nine years, maybe.
Well, so we could go back 10, so how about eight years? And then, just the, like the 1% over the bond for the interest?
Well, we don't set that till later, because number one, we don't know what our bond rate is. So that has to be one of the last things that we set, when we do it in the fall of 2024.
Okay. So that would be my amendment.
Okay.
I do think there's some chipped up, I know it's new, and a lot of it's in good shape, but some of that sidewalk is not in such good shape, so just keep that in mind if you walk that block.
Well, Darren said they, it would still be redone, all of it, but we could take some of the assessment money off of their piece.
Still complete, still complete the project 100%, just less assessment.
What percentage are you looking at? I mean, these are decisions that have to be made, so we can't just-
Right, I mean, we're talking about completing the project, and then going back and changing the assessment? Is that what you're asking?
Just not to assess as much to the people that have already replaced their concrete within the last eight years.
I think you're just going to open up a can of worms with this. I, I sympathize with people that have replaced sidewalks, but the whole purpose of this construction is, is to uniformity from one end of the street to the other. We've gone 39 years, for the most part, without having to replace anything outside of some individuals that did.
But it would still be uniform?
Well, I, is it fair to the other store owners and stuff then? I mean-
You're saying eight years, and what if somebody says, well, mine is 11 years? Can we go 11 years now?
Well, we wouldn't, because if we're deciding on this tonight.
But somebody can come in and say, well, hey, it's 11 years, why can't you include me now?
Well, they could have come to the public meeting.
No.
Would we do a resolution right now, based on what Jan is asking, or would we-
Does this need to go through the attorney first?
Wouldn't hurt to probably ask them, if, if that would fly with them, so.
Because the attorney reviews all of the plats and preliminary information, they recalculate everybody's assessment, and so before we could even bring it to the council, they had to approve everything. So, they approved it as written. So, I would feel better, if we were going to make an amendment, is to table the decision until the next meeting. But I want to have the amendment set in stone, and agreement with the council, that that's what you want to amend it to. Instead of postponing it, and then coming back and saying, oh, let's go back to the original. So, that would be my suggestion.
Okay. How far does that skew the project's completion, then? Does it change anything that's been outlined here, as far as the vetting process and everything else, Darren?
Well, so if, if you still felt like we're going to go ahead, so we, later on in the agenda, we have our amendment to our agreement, which is to design the project, you could say, well, we're, we still feel good, like we're going ahead, you could still authorize us to keep working on it. And then, you wouldn't really be, this is more formality, what you're doing tonight, that, that's what's telling us to keep working, is that agreement with us, with us. So, unless you felt like you didn't want to do the project, you know, that's up to you, but that's what we're, we're looking for, number five, so, on the agenda.
Yeah. So, again, the options were to amend it, to, to pass it as is-
Approve it as is.
Or to, to table it.
Table it till the next meeting.
Yeah.
Or, we set on meeting day.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you need a motion on something?
Well, if we're going to amend, then I think we need that ironed out. So I don't know if you want to just take a straw poll, if you want to work on amendment, or if you want to do it as is.
How do you determine a percentage on amendment, though, for five or eight years for wear and tear? That's the, that'll be the next thing, is the percentage, how do you come up with an honest percentage for that? Because if you did it variable based off of eight years, or five years, or three years, then that's one thing, but-
What other communities have said is, they just added, they just picked a number, and most of them picked 50%. They just said, it's, we're going to cut it in half. That's, but that's other communities.
And one thing to keep in mind, the assessments that were sent out included the curb and gutter that's already at 50%. So, if we say we're going to cut from 90% sidewalk assessment down to 50%, it's not going to cut their assessment exactly 50%. Just so everybody understands that it's not double that.
So how does that affect the adjoining properties for the assessment on the-
And so, what, what other communities have done, just in those, I'll say, special cases, is they just took the, the amount that's listed on the, on the assessment schedule, and just said, we're just cutting that in half. They're not reformulating any other factors, they just basically arbitrarily took the dollar amount and cut it in half. But that's, again, for a guy's choice.
So then the city pays the-
75% or 25%.
So then the city pays the remaining 50% that comes out of the tax.
They just said it's, we're going to put it on the deficiency portion, and the city's covering that, in those special cases.
How many years do they normally go back on that, did you say? Five to 10?
Five. Five is what, what we've experienced.
And five years is two properties, and if we go back 10, there's four more properties then, that could be added in there the way it looks.
You're talking 10 years or eight years?
There was eight, yeah, 2014, when what Barbara talked about, there were four, four-
Probably want to make it nine, because officially, it was done in July, so we'd probably want to say nine years.
So the four that are included, you're talking about the ones that are down where Barb's whole thing is?
Yep. Yep. 202, no, that's right, 123 North Elm, 117, 119, and 115.
121.
It's not on here. If you're at 121?
I'm at 121.
Okay. That must have been done without a permit then, because we just went off the permits that we had.
They've all done them the same, I think the permit was for all four of them, huh?
Yeah, but each property, I mean, I don't, today, each property would have to have their own, but I don't know how it was in 14, I guess.
There was one recommended, and I didn't mind.
Yeah.
I talked to Michelle.
Yeah.
We normally have a permit.
She had a record of it.
So-
So I would make the motion that we do the project, but we make a special 50% reduction in what Darren said other cities have done, for the people that have already done this within the last eight years.
Nine.
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 Sorry.
Okay.
What are we going to do when we got another street project we're talking about, and they're going to say, hey, I got brand new cement out of my, in my driveway, why should I tear that up to redo the sewer and water project? Are we going to give them 50% reduction? Because this is, the city's going to pay for it. So I mean-
Back when you did the alleys, you guys paid for it.
But I mean, we're, we're not looking at other streets we're going to be doing.
Right, but that's what they did back then, with Roy was talking earlier with his. You guys tore his new cement out, but yet you guys paid for it, because of the new sewer project, what was it, cement project?
That was in the back, though, Phil.
Huh?
This, that was in the back. This is going to be a street out front of your house.
It's, it costs the same money.
I believe when they did our Granger Road, they replaced everybody's driveways that they had to tear up. They replaced the part that they tore up, because I know they fixed ours. So wouldn't that be the same thing?
Wasn't that part of the original scope of the project? I mean, that's, and nobody, nobody on that street, if you replace a, a block of concrete on a street, and you come back and put a new street three, four years later, nobody gets a break on, on the easement, or the assessment. I mean, this is not a popular decision, it's not easy, but I just don't see, if we start piecemealing this thing, picking apart-
It's not going to be piecemealed. It's all going to still be all in uniform, all the same.
Understand that. It's all going to be the same, but what kind of interest do you get from people that aren't, that got decent sidewalk in front of their property, that don't want it replaced, outside of the ones that have replaced it? You know, not all the sidewalk is crumbling. I mean, how do you, how do you tell them, then, that you don't qualify?
Right.
It's not a popular decision, no matter what we make here, but the best interest of everybody, straight across the board, is, I think the project needs to be as is.
Okay, well, I made my motion, so if anybody wants to second it or not second it, then we can move on.
And again, your motion was to, just we're all on the same page. Nine years replacement and newer to pay 50%, or they would only pay 50% of their assessment. Is that what you said? Yep. Okay. So that's the motion that's been made. Is there a second? Okay. There's no second. So the next, I mean, we have to have a motion to do something tonight, and it can be to table it, it can be to proceed as, as planned, or to completely abandon it, I guess would be an option too, so. No abandoning it, right, that can't happen, that's bad.
So the only other motion is make the motion to proceed as we were. That's my motion.
That's your motion?
Yeah, because this has been a top capital project on my, on our list for the last three years.
I'd second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Carmen?
No.
McConnell?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, just a minute. We need four.
Amy's going tonight?
And so with Amy being gone, we're going to have to table it.
Okay. Special assessment project, we need four fifths of a motion?
That's what we were told.
Checking your yes or no?
Yeah.
Right?
Okay.
And since we don't have a full council tonight, we need, you still have to have 75% of-
All council.
Of all councils, so that's four. So, we're going to have to have a motion to table it until the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll make that motion table till the next meeting.
November 19th at 5:30 PM. No, November 21st, sorry. I mean, her, Kriener made the motion, whoops.
Yep, not, I was just going to say that.
I'll second.
And Fortune, second. Okay, so this is the motion to table it until the next meeting? Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so we'll discuss it at our next meeting at five, the meeting starts at 5:30, so we'll be a little after that, so. Okay, thank you for coming tonight. So, what do we skip to?
That's number three, so number four will have to be postponed until the next meeting as well. Right, Darren, is it?
Yeah.
But then we can go ahead with number five.
Right. If you have consensus that you still want to proceed, then we can still authorize us to keep going.
Yeah. And I think everybody's- Then I think everybody's in agreement to do it. It's just?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Okay. So I'm sorry, we'll go to number five?
Yep.
All right.
So I'll make a motion to continue on.
Well, once you got it read.
Okay, yeah, I'll read it. It's the number five, the resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into professional service agreement. Amendment number one with WHKS and Company for the downtown crosswalk reconstruction project.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number six, request for sewer adjustment for water not entering the sanitary sewer system from Anish Moss for legacy gym.
What do we know about it? I believe they had a boiler or something go bad. They do not have a floor drain down there, so they did have to pump it all out. So the water never made it to the same.
Did anybody from our?
Drew, drew it.
Drew one down and verified that?
Yep.
Okay.
And they actually helped them get the pump set up, and it went out into the alley behind their building.
And what was the total adjustment?
Uh, one twenty-six fifty.
Need a motion? I'll get that motion.
I'll second.
Kriener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number seven, resolution accepting work for the airport runway drainage improvements project.
I make the resolution. Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number eight, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney PC for contract review.
We skipped nine.
That was number eight.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there's two different Allers down there.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number nine, WHKS to present the proposed Seventh Street West reconstruction special assessment project.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, Council. So last month we were here, and we discussed the Seventh Street project from Highway nine north of Fourth Avenue, and then also with the storm sewer outletting south of Fourth, or south of Highway nine down by Plant Hybler. The council at that time kind of wanted us to look at a couple different options, kind of breaking apart the project into two, one kind of larger project with a smaller section kind of broken off. So we had done that and kind of presented that to Michelle, and I understand you guys discussed it at your last workshop. And so there was some cost savings, but there was also some future dollars that are kind of unknown that we also wanted to point out in your consideration. So it sounds like you guys have discussed this, so I don't want to waste your time. It sounds like you, you would like to proceed with the full project, is that kind of what the consensus was at the time?
Correct.
Okay. So not extend this any longer. So then we're just kind of looking to, to kind of look at getting the rest remaining and then adapting the, basically having another one of these public hearings about a month from now to discuss this with those property owners. So another fun meeting to have with the residents, so. So any questions?
So we need a resolution then to authorize? Number ten, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an engagement agreement with Allers and Cooney PC regarding the Seventh Street West reconstruction special assessment project.
So moved.
Second.
That was everybody.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number eleven, preliminary resolution for the construction of street, water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and other public improvements in the city of Cresco, State of Iowa.
That was my?
Oops.
Agenda did. Are you, do you look confused? Is there something wrong?
Just the preliminary, maybe explain a little bit what that is, because I'm unsure too, I guess.
So the preliminary resolution for the construction is that you're going forward with the project?
Oh, okay.
For Seventh Street?
Seventh Street southwest.
Right, so moved.
Second. Basically the same as ten, right?
Pardon?
Basically the same as elevated.
Same as what?
Same as ten?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
Ten was to go in with your attorney?
Yeah, that was with the attorney, yeah.
That was just.
Saying we're proceeding.
Yeah.
Okay, so roll call, Kriener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number twelve, resolution fixing values of lots for the Seventh Street West reconstruction project.
So this is, we talked about last time where they take the assessors' value of each of the properties and then the value of the improvements to it, and then you come up with that column that says what their assessed value could increase to be.
So moved.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
And Fortune?
Yes.
Number thirteen, resolution adopting preliminary plat and schedule, estimate of cost, and proposed plans and specifications for the construction of Seventh Street West construction, reconstruction.
So moved.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number fourteen, resolution of necessity proposed for the Seventh Street West reconstruction project.
And this is where we have to set the public hearing. And due to, I have to publish it in the newspaper two consecutive weeks and mail it to the property owners. So the soonest we can do it is December fifth.
I'd make the motion for the hearing to be set at December fifth at five thirty.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kriener?
Yes.
Number fifteen, resolution authorizing the city clerk to sign the health insurance contract with Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield.
And luckily, the premium's only increased one point nine percent this year, so that's a matter?
Better prove it for changes.
Exactly.
So moved. Oops, sorry, second. Did somebody already do it? So moved.
All right, Carmen, and then?
Somebody, Gary, second.
All right, Fortune?
Yes.